Review the agenda, board members. Is there a motion to adopt the agenda as presented?
So moved.
Backed.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Dr. Harrison has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Thank you. Next on the agenda, we have the approving of the minutes. Board members, we've had an opportunity to review the minutes in advance. Is there a motion to approve the August 18th, 2020 minutes as presented?
I so moved, madam.
Mr. Figurs has moved. Dr. Luckett has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved.
Madam President, may I interrupt you, please? And I may be working from an older agenda.
Okay.
But I believe the Policy Committee wanted to remove one of the policies listed IHJE. Am I correct, committee members?
Oh, what's?
It's IHJE Comprehensive School Counseling?
I thought, well, it's our agreement that with the changes that we made in the committee meeting would be what is is that, was that our agreement?
It was, but I'm not sure that there would have been time to do that before this meeting. That's my concern.
Okay, so the...
But perhaps Dr. Cormac or Attorney Robinson could help me remember.
Dr. Cormac committed to working with our webmaster to update the publicly available policy to reflect the changes that were communicated during the Policy Review Committee meeting. And as a result, the Policy Review Committee agreed to allow the item to remain on today's agenda.
Okay, great. Thank you for that clarification. Excuse me, Madam President.
That's what I want to, Dr. Harrison.
Thank you, Dr. Luckett.
Um, now, Dr. Green, the superintendent's report.
I'm managing my... Managing my... Okay, I believe we're prepared now. We'll start with the highlights reel.
I think Dr. Green's muted, or either I'm having trouble.
Okay, it looks like we're having some technical difficulties. Looks like we're having some technical difficulties with it. So I believe we'll come back to the video. Okay, we'll come back to the video. One of the things that is highlighted in the video, well, there are a couple of things, and you'll see that hopefully shortly. A couple of things, one being the census survey. And so we just want to again remind all of our community members, all of our families, all of our JPS team members, the importance of the importance of completing the census survey. And also for those who have yet to register their children.
Answering to the question.
Let's make sure that we have everyone on mute. And again, so we want to make sure that we have all of our children registered in school if they've not done that. And speaking of registration, as always, daily attendance is extremely important to ensure that our scholars receive the learning experiences that they need and that they deserve each day. As mentioned, or as you'll see in the highlights video, we've altered our attendance procedures. And specifically for those scholars who are learning asynchronously. So that means those scholars who are not learning in real time, online with the teacher, teaching at the same time, either they're offline and using the printed documents or tools, or they're learning at a different time and pulling down recordings of the classes. So for those scholars, our team will be utilizing a daily survey. And again, you'll get more information about this, but we want, we need all of our parents whose children will not be learning, are not learning synchronously, are not learning synchronously. We need them to complete the daily survey, which will be sent out to parents via their phone or text. Again, more information coming on that. Just want to underscore the importance of that because we have to account for our children each and every day. And if they're not online with us, learning in that way, then we need to make sure that we have another safe and consistent way of acknowledging who's with us and who's learning, and therefore who might need additional support and that sort of thing. Board members and community members, each year, certainly since I've been here and I know prior to my joining the team, we've made an effort to engage funders, grant makers, from local grant makers, as well as those from around the country, to increase their interest in the work that we're doing here in Jackson Public Schools, but also to join us with some of the more strategic efforts that we're making. So I'm pleased to report that based on some conversations over really the past year almost, we've been invited to apply for grants to address key areas of interest, to include student engagement, parent engagement, educator development in capacity building, virtual learning programs, and even policy development. JPS, and this invitation came from the Hewitt Foundation. And so Jackson Public Schools would select three of those five issue areas and submit our application by October 1st of this year. We could be funded up to $500,000 per issue area. And we could write for up to three of those issue areas. So if my man serves me correctly, that could be a total of 1.5... $1.5 million to support in those issue areas. And so really awesome opportunity to apply and to get some additional support through the Hewitt Foundation. And so we'll be working over the next few weeks to get our grant in. So we're excited about that as well. And I believe many of you know, we've been working with and have been supported by the Kellogg Foundation for several years. And they've, we've submitted our application to them for multi-year funding, for three-year funding from the Kellogg Foundation. This funding would continue their deep commitment to the Jackson Public Schools' community and to our efforts by supporting our current virtual learning program, as well as ongoing strategic initiatives. And obviously tied to our strategic plan. So just really excited about this opportunity. We anticipate hearing back from the foundation with their final decision of funding later this month. And this too would be over a billion dollars in terms of what we requested of the Kellogg Foundation. They've been wonderful partners to us over the years. And so we're very hopeful that they will make a final determination to support us in this way. Lastly, the National Education Association. We've been awarded a planning grant of $60,500 plus technical assistance by the NEA, National Education Association. The grant will assist us in developing a plan to implement the Community Schools model in the Lanier High School feeder pattern. And that's initially in the Lanier High School feeder pattern. They obviously are, or they would love to see us expand that programming with the Community Schools model throughout the district, but initially focused there. So we're grateful for the support from NEA, and we're excited by the potential impact on the Lanier High School feeder pattern and beyond. And just for those who are not so familiar with the Community Schools model, this is one in which you engage with a number of community organizations and entities to support in this wraparound, in the wraparound services. We so often talk about the needs of our community and the things that kind of step outside of the core business of the school district. And so it's an intentional way to engage with these partners, allow them to do what they do best, allow us to do what we do best, but to do it in a coordinated effort. And so we're just excited to get this, these seed dollars and this planning grant. And we do expect that we'll be able to do some great things in developing a plan and moving forward. And it does assume some potential for continued support from the foundation to implement the program. As part of our five-year strategic plan, we've created five commitments and key initiatives that will help guide our work of transforming our district. We're currently in the implementation phase of commitment number two, innovative teaching and learning. And at this time, our Jackson Public Schools Executive Director of Teaching and Learning, Dr. Kimberly Smith, will join us to outline what we're doing to support the academic achievement of our scholars. Dr. Smith?
Good evening. To President Johnson, our other school board members, to Superintendent Green, our other JPS staff and community that's listening in, it brings me a great joy to talk about one of my passions, and that's our core curriculum resources that we use in Jackson Public Schools. Next slide. Our mission at Jackson Public Schools, we prepare our scholars to achieve globally and to contribute locally and to be fulfilled individually. Next slide. Our vision is to become a top-ranked learning community that graduates productive, caring citizens who are prepared to succeed in a global society. As Dr. Green already stated, our commitment is innovative teaching and learning, and that's where this presentation will place its focus on. So we'll talk about the JPS Core Curriculum Selection Process. Through this process that is led by Ms. Lori Harris, she serves as our JPS textbook coordinator, and she leads and develops the textbook selection committee and the process. So first of all, we have our JPS District Textbook Committee that is developed. And then we have our textbook vendors are chosen to present their products. They have about 45 to 60-minute presentations to demonstrate how their product could possibly impact our students in Jackson. After this presentation has been conducted, then the committee rates each presentation. They are rated on features such as alignment to the Mississippi Core College and Career readiness standards, accommodations for our special population students, accessibility to teachers, integration to district level platforms, and relevance. Next, we have our JPS Committee presents recommendations to our JPS leadership team for feedback. And then our JPS selected, then we select materials that are presented to the school board for approval. So that's just the notes and bulk of our curriculum selection process. So a little bit about our JPS Core Curriculum. One of our commitments is a strong start. And so we start off with opening the world of learning with our pre-K scholars. This program, it not only does it develop our oral language and early literacy skills and provides guidance for teachers with a variety of materials to implement the magic units, but it also focuses on early literacy skills for our pre-K students, along with foundations that builds our foundational phonics skills. And students in grades K through 2, it gives students and phonemic awareness, guides, I'm sorry, students of phonemic awareness and word study contributes greatly to fluency vocabulary development, the applications of strategies for understanding text. It helps students develop skills for print awareness, phonics and decoding, word attack, vocabulary development, introduction of new words, word learning strategies, and also helps to be effluency. Next slide. And this is an example of what teachers receive in their ALKIDS. They receive a lot of support to help with the early literacy instruction of our pre-K scholars. And also there's an example of our Foundation Phonics Kit that teachers also receive in order to help with those foundational skills. Next slide. Here is found foundations in the virtual setting. This is Ms. Keys, a kindergarten teacher at North Jackson Elementary School, teaching a foundations phonics lesson using the computer in the virtual setting. And they are focusing on the letter B to sound out the word for bet. Next slide. So then we have our evidence-based EOLI curriculum that we use K through 5 with Great Minds and Within Wisdom, and it integrates reading and writing. The purpose of this implementation, it builds background knowledge, vocabulary, and writing skills. It exposes students to different levels of literature, information text. It also incorporates the arts, and teachers and students have an opportunity to view pictures and compare different works of art in order to be able to form their thinking around the concept that's being taught during that particular lesson. It deepens the understanding of core knowledge as well. With our 6th through 12th grade scholars, it also incorporates with McGraw-Hill Study Saint Reading and Writing, where it be a strong skills and foundations for our 6th through 8th grade students. And 9th through 12th focuses on independent critical thinking and analysis skills. Next slide. We have our evidence-based math curriculum for our Ready Math with Curriculum and Associates. Our middle school and our elementary students having a wonderful time with Ready Math that's aligned to our Mississippi College and Career Standards. It allows students to take ownership of their learning, provides rigorous practice opportunities that build students conceptual understanding and procedural fluency. They have manipulatives, a teacher toolbox that teachers are able to impact all of our students at every level using Ready Math. Our high school scholars are integrate, they use the Integrated Ambigence with Savvas Learning, formerly known as Pearson. It emphasizes conceptual understanding, facilitates productive struggle, strengthening students' ability to think mathematically. Our science curriculum with McGraw-Hill and Integrated Science, Inspire Science for our 4th and 5th grader, Integrated Science for 6th through 8th. And we also utilize our aims for our lower grades to ensure that our scholars are ready for the rigorous curriculum that presents us as they matriculate through our elementary, middle, and high. It is aligned to our next-generation science standards. It provides hands-on inquiry-based investigations, there are simulations throughout each of the science lessons that they can participate in virtually. The lessons are based on the 5E instructional model, which I will give you a more in-depth understanding of toward the end of the presentation. And also with our high school students, we use Savvas Learning and McGraw-Hill for Inspire Science with chemistry, physics, and physical science. Again, it allows our scholars to construct explanations for scientific phenomenon and design solutions for real-world problems. They need those connections. Next slide. And so you see a picture of what, how the programs actually integrate into our virtual platforms. This is an example of the texts that our elementary students use with Inspire Science and also with our biology classes. And so students are able to access those pictures, they're able to access the simulations, and whatever that resources that they need, that their teachers are assigning at the tips of their fingers. And then we have our evidence-based social studies curriculum, which is also through Savvas Learning, formerly known as Pearson. We have a wonderful opportunity this year that we're able to use this one resource, K through 12. So there will be a continuum of learning. And this is engaging students to be able to go on virtual field trips, be filled with other opportunities for students to practice reading and writing, because we do practice literacy throughout the curriculum, whether it's reading, math, science, or social studies, it is embedded. And it involves collaboration and communication skills. One keynote to make is that even with our special programs, as well as with our special schools, that we all use resources that are aligned to the standards that meet the needs of those students that are in programs such as IB programs as well as APAC. Next slide. So just a little about our 5E lesson structure. As we have begun training with what is the best method for providing instruction for our students in the virtual setting, just a little quick snippet on the 5E with Engage. That allows students to mentally engage in the lesson with an event or a question. And it also helps students to make connections with what they already know and already can do. Then students, we move to the Explore. Students will work with one another to explore ideas through hands-on activities. And this is a type of exploration that provides a set of common experiences for all learners. So all of our students can engage in the lesson. The next E is Explain, where students can construct explanations of the concepts and processes about which they are exploring. And the teacher then provides clarifying questions and examples for students to better grasp and have a deeper learning of the concept that is being taught. Then also for the next E is Elaborate. These lessons challenge students to apply what they have learned to a new situation and build on their own understanding. So instead of telling students what to think, they learn how to think and broaden their understanding. And last, but certainly not least, Evaluate, where students are able to access their own knowledge, skills, and abilities. And these lessons allow teachers to evaluate their students' progress and inform instruction. And these 5Es are not necessarily done one per day. They're done as needed. And if we need to engage and then go back to Explore, then we are able to do that. And so that way, their students will better understand the lesson that is being taught. Next slide. And so our professional learning opportunities that we have, we're continuing to engage our teachers in professional learning that began in July, so that they would understand how to implement our core curriculum. And these dates are currently being scheduled. We do have upcoming training dates that are scheduled even for this month. And so we've begun, we began in July, and so they will be ongoing, as noted, after the initial textbook training has occurred, to make sure that teachers are understanding and continue to build their knowledge on how to better impact instruction and provide quality instruction for our students in the virtual setting. Next slide. And so with our Leadership Development Series for our principals as well, and also with our Teacher Development Series, we're focusing on instructional leadership, organizational leadership, and operational leadership for our leaders and for our teachers about lesson design. We have, thank you for approving our calendar with our 80% days, because that gives us an opportunity to impact all of the teachers at least once a month with the same type of professional development. But then there are other ongoing sessions throughout the month to help to ensure that the 80% day is embedded and it becomes a natural process in the teaching and learning process. Next slide. And so we would like to say thank you. Thank you on behalf of all of our schools, to our board members for recognizing the importance of having high-quality resources to better improve the academic outcomes. So we thank you, thank you, thank you for all of your hard work and holding our feet to the fire, as well to ensure that we're choosing the right products and the right resources for our students. Are there any questions?
I don't, I don't have a question, but I believe you told me before, Dr. Smith, and maybe Dr. Green, that we house these, like your presentation somewhere. So if folks want to come back and learn more, they would be able to find your presentation on our website.
Yes, sir. Yes, ma'am. They are recorded. And so Sherwin does upload our board meetings afterwards on the school board, on our school board page on the website. And so that they are accessible after the meetings.
And the actual, also, I guess, connected to that question, the actual professional development that our teachers and school leaders get, we're recording more and more of those and chronicling those as well, correct?
That's excellent. Because these are the kinds of things that often my neighborhood association folk would like to know more about, because many of them are retired and don't have children currently enrolled, but they want to be helpful. So I really appreciate this very thorough presentation. Thank you.
Thank you.
And as a result of the, you know, our virtual model and just the reliance and the need to connect more deeply with parents with regard to the learning and the instructional tools and resources and all those things, we're opening up and sharing more of this kind of thing, more of this detail with parents. And so we'll make sure that we share more of those dates with you as well. We've got, and I know we've talked about this before, we've run some parent orientation and parent training sessions, and we've got more of that coming. I know Ms. Faulkner is working with organizations to support us with more and more of that. So these are the kinds of things that you start to, we're starting to share more of the details about, kind of to your point, Dr. Harrison. One of the things that I'll say just lastly about, for example, the 5E model and some of the other things that Dr. Smith shared in the presentation here, the point of this presentation is not to say all the, not to share all the things that we've got down pat already. It's to signal some of the shifts that we're moving, moving toward, and some of the new procedures and tools and approaches that we're using, partially because of, again, our move towards the virtual world and teaching virtually, but also as we think more and more about what it means for young people to learn, to engage in the 21st century, and just wanting to make sure that we're taking advantage of some of the newest learning in education and instruction. So, you know, don't want to in any way claim that we've got all these things down pat. You know, our team is hitting the ground learning and making sure that we're every day, and it's aligned to our growth mindset, one of our core values, ensuring that every day we're smarter than we were the day before, and that our scholars and families get the benefit of our getting smarter and smarter, stronger and stronger. Are there any final questions for Dr. Smith? Okay. Thank you again, Dr. Smith. Really appreciate your leadership and your work, Dr. Salgado, and to the entire team as you just continue with all of those efforts to improve our instructional delivery and students' engagement and ultimately students' learning. Let me check in with the team and see if we're prepared with the video. No? Okay. Looks like we won't have this.
JPS has developed a new attendance process to track daily attendance of the districts of synchronous learners or students who receive packets. A parent or child who is able to track his or her attendance and complete an online survey can now do so on any mobile device. This survey should be completed by the parents for pre-kindergarten and elementary scholars. The survey contains the following questions. What is your MCIS number? What is your MCIS number? Are you present for learning today? Do you need any assistance with your coursework? The MCIS number is a unique student identifier for all public school students in Mississippi. It also serves as the student's lunch ID. Answers to the questions will be shared with teachers, principals, assistant teachers, and support team members to provide outreach and support by phone to scholars who receive learning packets. The data collected will be used to track daily attendance. The survey will be available Tuesday, September eighth, on the JPS website and sent out as a text message with a direct link each morning. The district's learning management system, with the use of Clever, makes logging on for virtual learning stress-free for JPS scholars. Clever is a secure pipeline between the district's data and the learning applications that students use for virtual learning. The software allows students and teachers to open their devices, sign into the Clever portal, and click on their connected applications to automatically access the online learning program. Clever is an easy way for JPS scholars to sign on to all of the programs used by their teachers and the district. Another bonus to the software is the fact that it also eliminates having to remember multiple usernames and passwords. All JPS scholars access their learning management system via Clever using their Google account logins. Some online expectations for Google Meet or Zoom are as follows. Be on time, be in a quiet place, be prepared, dress appropriately for school, mute your microphone, participate in class, chat responsibly, communicate by speaking clearly, and be respectful. To all JPS parents, just a friendly reminder that nutrition on the go is not just a one-time stop. The program is ongoing and will continue throughout the virtual learning period. Thanks to the JPS Office of Child Nutrition and the Transportation Department, you can continue to pick up breakfast and lunch meals throughout the end of the semester and at thirteen school sites and neighborhood bus stops. Pickup times are from eleven AM until three PM each day. Please visit our website to learn more and to see the nutrition on-the-go pickup locations. JPS has canceled all fall sports and co-curricular activities, a decision that was made in response to the rise in COVID- nineteen cases in the Jackson area and after careful consideration for the overall well-being of JPS scholars and staff. But this decision does not mean that student athletes will sit idle during the fall season. Darryl Jones, executive director for athletics for JPS, has a plan to keep students engaged during the school year. He outlines these plans in a video meeting for parents. Some of the topics of discussion include scholar-athlete support for football, volleyball, cross-country, swimming, band, cheerleading, and virtual activities offered by the Mississippi High School Activities Association. This video is available on our YouTube channel. Please visit our website and click on our YouTube page to learn more. JPS registration is an ongoing process due to new student enrollment. The district has updated its enrollment and registration process to allow families to register for virtual learning. Please visit our website to learn more and click on these links for the following information. New student, pre-kindergarten, and returning student registration. Virtual learning for Jackson Public Schools is in its third week. Stay updated about the plan by visiting our website. JPS has a section on the site where updates about virtual learning will be posted as it becomes available. Election Day is Tuesday, November third, twenty twenty. Be sure to register to vote so that you can participate in this momentous event. If you're not registered, whether you have never registered or your registration is out of date, there is still time. The deadline for registering by mail is Monday, October fifth. You can also register in person if you prefer. If you vote in person, remember polls open at seven AM and close at seven PM. And you must have a valid photo ID. For more information, please visit the Mississippi Secretary of State's office at www.sos.ms.gov. We count, Mississippi. Let's show it by completing the twenty-twenty census. To complete the online questionnaire, go to mytwentytwencensus.gov. The process is quick and easy, and it will only take about ten minutes to complete. It is also safe, secure, and confidential, and your information and privacy are protected. JPS has been an advocate of the importance of participating in the census since the beginning of the new year. Here's a video from the district's March twenty-twenty school board meeting. Everyone counts in Mississippi, yet many people are left out of the federal census. The hardest to count include children ages zero to five, immigrants and non-English speakers, people of color, Native Americans, those living in poverty, renters, and people in rural locations. In Mississippi, every person counted results in approximately two thousand fifty-three dollars in federal funding per year. That's more than twenty thousand dollars per person per decade. An accurate count is essential to a thriving economy, educational opportunities, and healthy equitable communities. Every household can participate in the census through the web, mail, or by phone. Talk to your neighbors, friends, and family, especially those with young children, and remind them of how valuable their participation is. When everyone counts, everyone thrives. If you have not already participated, get started now at twentytwencensus.gov. The deadline to return the questionnaire online is September thirtieth. Lee Elementary School is under consideration for a new name. Lee, located in South Jackson, is named for Confederate General Robert E. Lee. A committee has been formed to begin the rebranding process. The members consist of teachers, students, parents, community members, school board members, and district personnel. Nominees for consideration should meet the following criteria. Must have ties to the local community, have made positive strides in education and the community, and must be relevant to students. Committee members are seeking to have identified a name by November third, the week of the national election. Nominations will be accepted from September fourth through the fifteenth, twenty twenty. For more information about Jackson Public Schools, please visit our website, follow us on Facebook, Twitter, YouTube, and Comcast Channels eighteen and nineteen.
Thank you to the um instructional television team.
JPS has developed a new attendance process to.
Appreciate the team for uh for sharing the video. We got excited, wanted to share it again. Thank you again, team. I'm glad we were able to to make that happen. Last from my remarks this evening, board members. I'm saddened to inform you that we learned today that Kendall Myers, twenty-twenty graduate of Jim Hill High School, recently succumbed to the COVID-nineteen virus. Um so we join the Myers family and the entire Jim Hill High School uh community in mourning the loss of the loved loved one and definitely just want to remind all of us of the seriousness of the COVID-nineteen virus and the need for all of us to take care of ourselves and take care of um our community members. With that, President Johnson, uh board members, that concludes my announcements and my remarks this evening.
Thank you, Dr. Green. And um Dr. Smith, um that was a lot of good news in trying times. Are we good? Okay, good. Um. Do we have any participants for public comment? We have no participants for public comment. And so therefore, board members, we will move on to information items only. Dr. McCracken, Mr. McCracken.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Right, um. Madam President, board members, uh Dr. Green, JPS staff, and visitors. Uh this is a presentation that we always enjoy presenting to the board members uh as well as the staff. And uh this is, of course, the September edition, if you will, uh of the bond uh program. Next slide. Uh we would like to share with you uh points of interest. Uh these are the four points of interest that we would like to share with you today. Uh one being, of course, a point of interest, uh the sample listing of project status, bond construction program experience uh expenditures, and photos of various projects completed and under construction. And I know that portion right there is pretty much a real satisfying uh element of this uh particular presentation. But starting with the next slide. Uh this is points of interest. Uh we just wanted to share with you that the architectural firms uh that were recently hired, we met with all of them, and they're in the process of doing the design phase of this particular um phase two and phase three. And they've received the scope of projects or the scope of work for each project and each location. And uh we have, we're giving them a timeline for various completions depending on the various size of the projects. So they're quite enthused, quite engaged, uh so are we. Uh and also with the bond oversight committee, uh we had an awesome opportunity to invite the bond oversight committee to Callaway and Forest Hill uh to see the construction work uh while it was under construction. They were quite pleased with the work that was performed, especially in comparison to what it used to look like. Uh so it is uh it has transformed those particular schools. And the students and teachers will certainly be pleased with that work as well. And with the bond administration team, we've learned from various small minority contractors that their bonding capacity has increased with then they're able to get larger-sized projects uh based upon the work that has been done with the bond program or having the opportunity to do work with the bond program. So uh where they otherwise would probably not have an opportunity uh to do this work, their bonding capacity has increased, which means they can do larger projects uh without any reservations from their surety company. So this is something that we're quite pleased with, and also this is uh one of the bond administration team's objectives. So we're quite pleased uh with that particular uh good news. Next slide. Sample listing of project status. This is a listing uh which you may have seen earlier in the year, but this is a listing of some of the work that is in phase one uh and also phase two. These projects actually gives you the phase of design as well as where they are in terms of either they're under construction in a design process or under construction uh and also um in a host of, also in the bidding phase. Uh so as you see that Hughes Field, uh that is in a design phase, South Jackson is in a bidding phase, Baseball Complex, New Field are in the bidding phase. Baseball Baseball Complex and New Field are part of the bond packet uh and is a part of the fact sheet. And so those that particular, those particular projects are in the design phase, and we anticipate the completion of the design and construction by August thirty-first. So the first game that if at all possible, that we can um resume the athletic program, football program, New Field will be poised and ready to receive students uh August thirty-first uh if everything goes very well. And as of now, the design is moving there, moving forward. Uh we, of course, would do the bidding phase, then do the awarding phase, and then do the construction. Uh we anticipate the bidding phase to start in January and the construction from February to August thirty-first. Uh Forest Hill, as I mentioned earlier, is under construction and uh the list continues. The science labs, um all science labs, uh they are under construction. We bid at those projects. And they are all under construction and the teachers uh as well as the principals are excited about this work. Although it's quite a bit of work going on at some of the schools, uh but they're excited about the um the science labs. This is something that was really needed, uh and we certainly are pleased and proud that we're able to make some modifications in the science labs. As you know, we did some decommissioning of the science labs sometime back to remove all the old chemicals out of the labs so that we can expand and improve and enhance uh the aesthetics of of the science lab. As mentioned earlier with Callaway, uh that work is on construction as well, and it has been transformed uh to a better uh look as well as a more functional and pleasing to the, pleasing to the eye. Capital City, uh that work is under construction in Hardy Middle School. Now, one may ask, well, why are we doing the work at Hardy Middle School? That particular project or that particular school has been repurposed. And uh so students will be attending that school uh as well as some staff because it will be deemed as an athletic complex. So work is um undergoing or ongoing at that school in terms of window replacement, door replacements. And we'll be uh bidding the restrooms at that location. Next slide. The Career Development Center, work is going on at that school. As you see, some work has been completed. Uh we're now doing the doors. The restroom should be completed within the next sixty days uh at that location. So that work is uh moving very well. Pro-Vine restroom, uh that started two and a half months ago, and that work now is completed. We're in the process of uh doing inspections for the final work of the restrooms. Uh so they look, they look so much better than what they were, and you will see samplings of that throughout uh near the tail end of the presentation. And then the next project will be the kitchen. Uh probably won't see a lot of that work. This is pretty much under the building. We've had some um piping issues there. So this bond program will certainly help uh resolve that project. And the exterior lighting has been completed as well. Uh I did get a call about the potholes in it, in the parking lot, and uh we, that is a part of the bond program, resurfacing the parking lot uh in Hines County through the um uh resolution that they will assist in helping us with that particular parking lot as they did uh with John Hopkins Circular Drive uh that I showed to you last month. Uh and the list goes on. Green is under construction, quite substantial amount of work that's going on in Green. And uh it is being transformed. There was major issues with the flooring uh as well as some of the restrooms, uh outside drainage, and we're correcting all of that with the bond funds. Boyd, uh this is a part of MDE, and I'll show that uh to you further in presentation. But Boyd was a part of the MD with the um egress, second means of egress, uh from doors and windows uh at Boyd, and that work has been completed. So we uh certainly going to invite MDE to come out and sign off on on that school so that we can be in compliance. Next slide. Uh moving further, as I stated earlier, this is Forest Hill and the work that's going on in Forest Hill uh and also Jim Hill. Uh Jim Hill was a part of MDE as well as Forest Hill. Uh Forest Hill was primarily the basketball court that was um uh that was on level and air conditioning in the um Coliseum. Both the air conditioning has is being installed and the flooring is being installed as well. Jim Hill, the last item at Jim Hill was to uh where the bleachers in terms of MDE, uh the corrective action plan was to remove the bleachers. They were damaged. So we uh were given the uh instructions to repair or remove the bleachers. Uh they were not repairable, if you will, uh fixable, so we actually were going to replace them. So that item can be crossed off the list with MDE, and we hope and pray that they can come in and sign off uh with that particular school. Next slide. And this is the last slide. Work is uh going on at Lanier Restroom Renovations. It was certainly in need of restroom renovations. We've done some repair work in the building. Uh but now we're doing the restroom renovations and sinkhole in the back of um Lanier. And uh there will be some additional work that will be done for side upgrades, which uh the Department of Archives and History approved. And we will begin advertising that particular project uh shortly. Next group. This is just a compilation of the activities or the numbers uh for the bond program to sixty-five million dollars. And there are some numbers that Mrs. Mrs. Miller and her team are working on and our figures. They're the same amount, but we're we're looking at the crude. And our figures, they're the same amount, but we're, we're looking at the accrued funds not expended. And we're looking at also the total encumbered funds, which have been obligated based upon the work that has been bidded and the funds are set aside for that particular project. And also Phase One, Phase Two, Architecture Engineering, these and projects that are scheduled for the next phase. So these are the dollar amounts. I know the accrued amount and the cash amount vary greatly from Mrs. Miller's report. But all of these numbers fall in one, fall in line with each other because they're coming from the same source. So we're, we're not creating numbers. These all come through from Marathon, so we are working from the same page. The next slide. And these are some of the improvements that have been made throughout the district. And as some passive buyers were at the site at Key Elementary School, walking along the new walkway that the city performed. We're very pleased with the exterior of Key Elementary School. It was just cleaning the facility and painting the facility. So now it looks more welcoming and there is an improvement in that location. So this certainly enhanced that corner of McDowell Drive. Next slide. Marshall Elementary School. We've had some issues with some vandalism on top of the roof with HVA systems that have been vandalized over the years. And now this will certainly help mitigate that by putting in additional lighting. We didn't want to put stadium lights in. We didn't want to light up the entire neighborhood. But we certainly wanted to improve the lighting of that area to help deter those types of aggressions. And this has been installed and completed. And it certainly improves the look of that particular school. That's just one light item for Marshall that has been completed. Next slide, please. Pro Bond. If you have had the opportunity to visit it, Pro Bond years past, the restrooms were not in the best shape. And now we've gone in and totally regutted the restrooms and provided new fixtures, new partitions, new mirrors, new flooring, lighting. So this will certainly be more, be welcoming to the students when they do return. Teachers that are already there are pleased with the work. We're getting ready to sign off on this, on this work that has been done this week so that they can be utilized. So that work has really improved the conditions of the space that the citizens requested at Pro Bond. Next slide. Callaway High School. The gym, the gym floor was damaged due to a poor, well, a poor roof. And the roof was leaking in various locations throughout the building. And we, and it affected the floor. So we ended up having to remove the floor in addition to meeting MDE's request. As you note down at the bottom, it says MDE standard 30, air conditioning gymnasium corrective action, new air conditioning and flooring for that particular school. The air conditioning is operable. In order to put the flooring down, we had to have a conditioned space. So the air condition is working and it's, it certainly makes a big difference in that space. And when students come back, they will certainly be welcome to this space. And they will certainly enjoy that space. The bleachers have already been purchased. They're in storage and soon as the floors are completed. To your bottom left, they're right, doing right at a third of the floor. And by the end of October, this facility or that space will be fully completed. And as you see to the bottom left, what is called a sock, a sock vein or sock air conditioning unit. It highlights Callaway's chargers. And that's where the air condition flows through and disperses throughout the district. I mean, throughout that particular space. So it's going to really enhance this operation. And we have met MDE's request. Next slide. This is a continuation of the work that has been done at Callaway. You see to your left was the new lay-in ceiling was not in place. And we put in new lay-in ceiling, new lighting, and of course, enhance the floors. And that will be throughout the entire space of Callaway. And we will be doing some additional work in Callaway as well. So Callaway is ongoing. The re-roofing is still on, still in progress. I want to believe they're right at 75 to 80% complete with the roof of Callaway. And that certainly will help us to not have leaks throughout the building, especially damaging the new acoustical tile that, that is in place now. Next slide. Callaway again. This is where MD requested that we have a second means of regress. So the window to your left shows that this is a larger window that has been accepted by MDs so that one could escape in case of fire. So we've met the standard and would certainly welcome MD to come out to clear this particular school with the air conditioning and the windows in Callaway. So that puts us in very good position with MD in terms of getting schools in compliant. Next slide. Forest Hill. Forest Hill had a series of carpet throughout the building. And the carpet has been there since day one, over 20 some odd years, and it looked like it. And we certainly wanted to remove that carpet and putting flooring. We just introduced a different texture and different type of tile for the flooring to enhance that space. So just give it a little flair. Painting has been done, new ceiling, a lay-in towel, land ceiling has been done as well as new lighting. So the space does not look as dull, dingy, and, and boring, if you will. So it really heightens and lightens that particular space. Next slide. Forest Hill. Excuse me. The next slide was Jim Hill. This was also an MD, as I mentioned to you earlier, damaged bleachers that were, we were cited for those bleachers have now been removed. This photo was about two weeks ago. The floor, the gym bleachers have been removed and the floor has been removed because the floor was actually a hazard for the students. There were some finished toenails that actually pierced through the floor because the floor, wood was so thin, we could not sand it down and to, to make it a safe space. So it was in the best interest of the district to provide new flooring for that particular school. So that's a welcoming feature to the school and also meeting MDE's requests as well. So we're excited about that particular move. The last slide, please. This is the front entrance to Murrah. As you may recall, during a town hall meeting, a visitor or a guest that was interviewed stated that, that entrance to Murrah was a tripping hazard. And we wanted to correct that very quickly before others may have gotten an idea to trip and fall. So we tried to mitigate that as quickly as possible so that we remove the walkway and introducing some new walkway for the school in addition to some other work that's being performed now in terms of restrooms and plumbing at Murrah. So these are just some of the photos that we have of the work that has been done, that has been completed and work that's under construction. We still have quite a bit of work to, to go. But in the next coming months, you will see work that is, that will be starting at the remaining schools, all part of Phase Two and Phase Three. And we certainly want to capitalize on the time that students were not in the building so that we can get more work done without having to work after hours and on weekends. So if we can continue to stay the course, we can get a lot more work done much quicker. And of course, meet the timeline for the expenditures of the remaining funds for the bond program by December 31st, 2021. That concludes my presentation and we'll welcome any questions that you may have.
Thank you, Mr. McCracken. Board members, are there any questions?
Good evening, Mr. McCracken.
Good evening.
Thank you for the financial update. And again, if you could just, just help us understand the pace at which the money is expected to go out, the pace at which projects are going to be completed. I am a little bit concerned about being behind. It feels like we're behind. We have about 14, 15 months left. But I believe all the money must actually be spent. Not obviously completed, but bills paid for. And if that assessment is wrong, please correct me on that. But I did push the team a little bit on signaling, signaling to us what's being done to accelerate the pace at which projects are completed.
How we're accelerating the pace? We're asking the architects to do, to not do the schematic design, where there are four phases. You got the schematic design, design development, construction document, and bidding. We're asking the architects to skip the schematic design. That's just something that will, is this what you want? Can we do this? We've given them directions, how to move forward, the scope of work, a clear, concise approach to each project, which means they don't have to do the schematic design. They can go directly in a design development. That takes out 30 to 60 days. Then the schematic, the design development of the projects that they're doing, those projects will only take 60 days to 90 days to do. So we can actually start advertising November, December, January, and have the rest of the year to complete the project. So there will be a multitude of projects that are, that are going on. And we timed it to this. We want to get all of the larger projects out of the way, which are still most of the larger projects. The funding has not all, the billing has not caught up with all of the, the encumbered money. For example, one school may be $5 million. That, and the work goes on for 300 days. They have may only bill for $1.5 million as of today. But those funds have already been encumbered. So we will look at, we've asked the architects to move expeditiously on all of the projects that, that they have in Phase Two and Phase Three. And, and also we're breaking out smaller projects as well to get those moving. The 50,000 projects, those will be coming up in the next 30 to 60 days. So between now and January, excuse me, now and December, we will have, I can provide a listing, projected amount of projects that will be, that will be done between that period of time. But the bulk, the bulk of Phase Two and Phase Three will get started in February in terms of bidding, because some of these projects are going to take some time to bid. And some of the projects will only be 60 days, 90 days, and 100, 120 days. Fortunately, the small, the larger projects for Phase Two and Phase Three ranges 1 million. Powell is 1.5. And there was, I forgot the other school was right at $500,000. Those are your larger projects for Phase Two and Phase Three, with the exception of the science labs. And that is $3 million. And the architects already presented the phase, the schematic designs for the science lab. So that work be turned out very quickly. So again, the bulk of the work, the bulk of the construction was starting February through December 31st of 2021. Did that answer your question?
I guess that, that actually, so if we still have work going on after November, which we haven't paid for it, doesn't that mean, do we lose that money? I guess, but I heard you just say is that work will be going on through December. And my understanding is.
This December, this December.
By November.
No, I'm saying this December.
I can sell those formally.
No, I'm saying work will go on till this December.
This December.
Yeah, this December. We will have work starting, starting in the next 30 to 60 days up till December. And then the bidding process, those that have to bid longer, that will start in February. And those projects, maybe 10 projects, but each one maybe 60 days, 90 days, 100 days. That would just put us right in the middle of the summer. So those projects, the longer projects, that may be 200 days, that will put us right at October, October, November. And at that time, the bulk of, I would say 99% of the work should be completed by that time. That's what we're banking on. That's how we're driving architectural firms. That's how we're driving the design so that this work can be done. For example, New Field, that's going to run about $3 to $4 million. That work, the design work is in play now or is in play. We would like to bid in January, February, start construction in February, March. And do the construction all the way up to August. So that will complete that $4 million. That knocks out a nice little chunk. Forest Hill will be completed in, I want to believe in April. Callaway would be completed in April. So these, that will knock out a large chunk of the dollars that associate with the bond program. The middle school libraries, excuse me, the middle school science labs, which is right at $4 million, that, that chunk will be knocked out right in, I would say, April or May. So those, that's $12 million right there that we could knock out very quickly, within that time period.
Thank you, Dr. McCracken.
I, I can't hear.
Thank you, Mr. McCracken. Appreciate that, that feedback. Dr. Seback and board members, reality is we're behind.
Yeah.
We're, we're behind. And we're pressing our team and our partners to work double time to catch us up. There's several reasons why we're behind. Some of it is with regard to weather and, 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 you know, some other things, some other issues. Some of it is just our, just the, the magnitude of the projects and trying to manage early on, you'll recall, trying to manage it all in-house. So we've gotten some additional support. We're asking for even more support of those partners to move the projects through. So I don't want to, you know, while I appreciate Mr. McCracken's optimism, I don't want to downplay the fact that we are behind on our projects. And we're working really, really hard to double time and, and catch up and make up some of that time. Because we do realize that we've got to deliver come the end of next year, come November. And so conversations now with, with our, with the construction management company, with IMS, with developers, as Mr. McCracken has already mentioned, we're, we're, we're seeking to kind of bypass some of the nice to haves to get to the, and how do we move this work right now? And we're getting better about pressing on the providers to work more efficiently. Last thing I'll say is even the, the fact that we are virtual, largely virtual now, at least in terms of the scholars, taking more opportunity and more advantage of this time with the buildings and doing more of the projects than originally we conceived. And so things like that are, are, are helping us to move more rapidly. But the reality is we, we, we understand that we're under the gun.
Do you have what you need to meet the deadline?
Let me ask Mr. Albright, do we have what we need to meet the deadline?
I believe.
For those who have not met him, Mr. Albright is our chief operations officer.
I believe that with the addition of IMS in the construction management role for us as opposed to really consulting around the actual project completion, that we can move a lot of these smaller projects faster. We'll be able to inspect as the work is being accomplished as opposed to going out and doing a final walkthrough and a punch list, which is a lot of what we have had to do up to this point. So I'm not saying that, that we're not looking at the quality of the construction that's being, being performed right now, but these are larger projects. So when the, the larger number of projects start, those smaller duration projects, we're going to need more people and we have already arranged for that. So I think with that, Ms. Miller and I are in daily contact about how. So I think with that, Ms. Miller and I are in daily contact about how much funds we have to have when. So we're looking at a different draw schedule so that we can pull money as we need it. And then again, as Dr. Green said, we are really pushing hard on our contractors to actually get to the work. So that we can see the, the actual improvements being made and get these contracts completed, inspected, canceled. So that they can apply for funds and, and complete the project, and we can move on to other things.
Yeah. And as, as Dr. Green and Mr. Albright just mentioned, we had mentioned some time back that we will, actually a month ago, that we would be, we will be coming to you with IMS, additional project coordinators versus scheduling. They were designed to do scheduling for us, and that has worked out fine, but we're bringing on more project coordinators. Right now, we still have two, we originally needed four, we will have two now, so we have, that will bring on six additional. We will have total of six project coordinators, which means they can handle more projects, these smaller projects. So the optimism is there, but you're correct, Dr. Green, as we stated some time back, yes, we were behind for various reasons. But we're doing everything in our power with the encouragement of the contractors and corporation with the contractors, as well as the architects to move all of these projects forward, to, to make the timeline that has been established.
Board members, any other questions regarding the bond?
Thank you, Mr. McCracken, now we can move on to item B.
Thank you so much. This particular request is to get an agreement with Jackson Public Schools and Atmos Energy for right away, for the use of putting a new system or gas line at the, at the corner of, or the north, northwest corner of the property line at Raines Elementary School. It's a small sector of land, less than fifty by fifty, and this is where they would like to have an area to, for, for right away for easement at that location. That's it in toto.
Thank you, Mr. McCracken, board members, are there any questions or comments? There being none, we will move on to the next item, thank you, Mr. McCracken again.
Good evening, President Johnson, all the board members, Dr. Green, JPS team, and all others. You have before you information recommending approval of South Group, the Evans Agency, and Bitco Insurance Company to provide a workers' compensation insurance policy for the district. The district purchases this insurance policy each year to pay for expenses related to employee injuries. The policy of reference is a guaranteed cost policy, which does not require, which does not require a per claim deductible. Only an annual premium is required to be paid in all costs or then transferred to the insurance carrier. At this time, I present this information for your consideration.
Thank you, Dr. Chrisler. Board members, are there any questions or comments?
Ask a question. Dr. Chrisler, could you share, and thank you for the background information in our prep materials? How this recommendation, how we vetted it with the other insurance consultants that we have engaged across the district as we get our, all of our risk management policies, all our insurance policies aligned and coordinated?
I think I understand your question.
I'm sorry, could you start again? Dr. Chrisler, we didn't hear you.
Okay, can you hear me now?
Yes, we can, thank you.
Okay, basically, the insurance, the risk management consultants, as well as your internal risk management department, have strategies such as providing a safety incentive program, recognizing our employees or those safety leaders who have a safety record on a quarterly basis of no injuries. We will recognize them with certificates of safety, as well, as well as through the JPS news. We'll also be risk assessing our, our buildings for any safety hazards that may be causing injuries. We will provide safety talks on a monthly basis, and this is our monthly online training regarding workplace safety for our employees. There will also be crisis prevention training that's offered, I believe, through our campus enforcement department. And I believe our professional development department is gonna be working with our teachers and our school leaders regarding classroom management to manage some of those claims that are related to physical altercations. We did identify the leading cause of injury as slip, trips, and falls, and our risk management consultants are recommending that we consider appropriate shoes, probably in our classroom area. I believe a lot of our claims are, the leading claims are coming from the classroom or our teachers. They will also be recommending a MetCor triage nurse, and we'll be presenting that information to you in, in the next meeting, I believe. They're also recommending some floor maintenance concerns regarding the slip, trips, and falls and so forth. So this is how we are, we're planning to reduce the frequency and, as well as the severity of the claims that will impact the premiums.
Dr. Seaback, this is Erica Robinson, I also want to add some additional layers to your direct question. I think that the recommendation that has been provided by the South Group supports an overall risk management approach that will help the district over time to reduce the cost of its premiums. We have continued to work, or they recommended that we continue to work with Bitco because of their willingness to be an engaged partner through the twenty-nine and twenty-twenty policy year. And we have their commitment from the leadership to support the risk management efforts of the district overall. They also understand that JPS, along with its risk management consultant, is working to implement more strategic approaches to addressing risk management from a holistic perspective from the district. So hopefully that provides a more direct response to your specific inquiry.
Thank you.
I have one question, Dr. Chrisler, what's the cost savings between last year and this year?
Uh, the cost savings was thirty-two thousand eight hundred and eight dollars.
And we expect that this risk management will mean safer environments for teachers and then, you know, teachers and classrooms for kids.
Right.
Thank you. Are there any other questions, board members? Thank you, Dr. Chrisler. Dr. Bingham Gibbs.
Giddy, board president, board members, Dr. Green. The Office of Exceptional Education Services presents for information, a renewal agreement with Millcreed of McGee. The purpose of this agreement is to establish working procedures between Jackson Public School District and Millcreed School of McGee, and the provision of services to children eligible for special education and compliance with federal and Mississippi state laws and regulations. Millcreed of McGee is a private facility recognized by the Mississippi Department of Education as an approved educable child placement facility. Students served at this facility are enrolled or referred by the school district placement.
Thank you, Dr. Bingham Gibbs. Board members, are there any questions? There being none, we will move on, Attorney Robinson.
Good evening, board president, board members, and members of the JPS community. On behalf of the Office of the General Counsel, I would like to recommend that the Board of Trustees adopt its recommendations related to the following six policies. The first policy is coded BBBCB. It is titled Board Member Visits to Schools. It is a new policy, and the Office of the General Counsel recommends the adoption of this new policy to explicitly codify the, the board members' obligations to visit each school within the district. The, the policy also clarifies that board members may satisfy this obligation through virtual means. The legal requirement is contained in both Mississippi Code annotated thirty-seven dash seven dash three oh one, which requires school board members to visit schools in the district in their discretion in a body for the purpose of determining what can be done for the improvement of the school in a general way. There was an additional amendment to a separate code, Mississippi Code annotated thirty-seven dash seven dash three oh six subsection four, which was amended in the two thousand legislative session that specifically requires, quote, "every school board member selected after July one," I think that was two thousand, "shall spend at least one full day in a school in the district they represent without compensation." Now, we do know that as a result of the COVID crisis, the Mississippi Department of Education has suspended the requirement for in-person visitation for board members. However, we still recommend the adoption of the policy and the inclusion of the language that will allow for virtual visitation requirements, to the extent that we have board members at some future time that might not be able to physically attend or satisfy that requirement, but they could still serve on our board via this additional virtual requirement that the Jackson Public Schools would be adopting. The next recommended policy for adoption by the board is policy DIED, titled Purchase Order and Contract. This is an amendment. The Office of the General Counsel recommends the amendment of this policy to provide settlement authority for legal matters by the superintendent in consultation with the General Counsel up to the dollar amount articulated in the policy, which is twenty thousand dollars. Adoption of this amendment will assist the district in addressing litigation matters that are ripe for settlement in a more efficient way and ultimately result in a cost savings to the district. We reached the twenty thousand dollar amount by looking at the settlements related to various automobile claims, which are quite frequent in the district over the past five years. And the majority of those claims could be resolved for an amount that's twenty-five thousand dollars or less. In addition to looking at the district's own data, we also reached out and reviewed policies for other comparable school districts. And we recognize that other general councils also have settlement authority for much greater amounts, typically around a hundred thousand dollars to settle without board approval. Given the board and JPS has never had such approval, we thought it a bit aggressive to request a hundred thousand dollars at this juncture. However, we do believe that with a twenty thousand dollar settlement authority between the superintendent and the general counsel, we can work to more expeditiously close matters where there is clear liability for the district. So that, that recommendation. The third policy is policy IAAB, online or distance learning. This is a proposed new policy that is recommended by the Mississippi School Board Association's model policy. And it relates to online or distance learning, and it works to establish the standards that will support the district's use of virtual, of a virtual learning model. I believe that this is an appropriate adoption or creation of a new policy, because henceforward, I don't think that we will have K through twelve education where online learning is being used in some capacity. It might not be utilized solely as the sole model based on what's happening with the global pandemic. But I do believe that going forward, we will continue to have the need for engaging with online resources and technology. And this policy provides a framework within which our instructional staff can utilize online technology. The next policy that we are recommending for adoption is also a new policy, it's policy IAAB, titled Staff Conduct on Virtual Meetings. The Office of the General Counsel recommends the adoption of this MSBA Association's model policy related to staff conduct to establish standards for employees utilizing virtual means to deliver instruction. The next policy we are recommending for removal, which is a first, is exciting, honestly, IDL Work Study Program. The reason we're recommending that this policy is removed is because it's duplicative. The Assistant Superintendent for the High School Division recommended the removal of this policy related to work-study programs because we recently provided information regarding the amended early release policy that will cover situations that involve work-study release, as well as other type of early release for high school students. Before turning over the microphone to Dr. Davis to discuss policy IH, which is the Comprehensive School Counseling Program, I'd like to address some of the questions that were raised prior to the meeting regarding the policies. The policies were reviewed and recommended by the Policy Committee in its August two thousand twenty meeting. Related to matters of online instruction, we do reference staff conduct. However, student conduct is also referenced in the student policies, as well as the Student Code of Conduct/ handbook. Specifically, our current Code of Conduct and set of policies does create a framework that allows students to be addressed from a disciplinary perspective if they violate policies related to online learning, and that is discussed on page eighty-nine of the Student Code of Conduct in the section related to Internet, Computer Misuse, and Electronic Device Misuse. Now, I will turn it over to Dr. Davis to discuss the Comprehensive School Counseling Program.
Thank you, Attorney Robinson.
Good afternoon, everyone, can y'all hear me?
Yes, we can.
Okay, um, the Comprehensive School Counseling Program, we were asking for it to be, the policy to be revamped, and which is what has been submitted to you. We are trying to make sure that all the counselors, not by division, because the old policy focused on only secondary, but we wanted to make sure that all the counselors at the elementary, middle, and high schools understood that we are following, following the guidelines for the American School Counseling Association, which is also known as AAFCA. And so the policy that you have before you not only follows AAFCA, it aligns with the state of Mississippi's requirements for school counselors as well. And so we want to kind of make sure that everybody understands that this is what is, we, what we are requiring, but it is not, it does not cover everything.
Thank you. Board members, any questions or comments for Attorney Robinson or Dr. Davis? Thank you both. Now, we have Ms. Marshall Thomas.
Good evening. The administration is presenting for information, the contract between CT Three, which is the Center for Transformative Teacher Training, and the Jackson Public School District for the purpose of providing jobs embedded, coaching, and school-level support to teachers and principals, focused on school-wide and classroom culture and classroom management aimed at improving teaching and learning outcomes. The services provided will entail leadership coaching, teacher and staff coaching, workshops, online courses, and virtual supports. And the coaching supports will be both in-person and virtual.
Thank you, Dr. Marshall Thomas. Are there any questions or comments, board members? Okay, you can go on with G.
Okay. The administration is presenting for information, the memorandum of understanding with Hans Community College and the Jackson Public School District. with Hans Community College and the Jackson Public School District to offer dual credit and dual enrollment courses during the 2020-2021 school year. The purpose of dual credit enrollment and dual credit program is to offer structured opportunities for qualified high school students to simultaneously enroll in college courses and in high school courses to obtain academic post-secondary credits. So this memorandum of understanding makes the program accessible to schools and scholars in the community who wish to participate, and all seven high schools are eligible for participation. That includes Callaway, Forest Hill, Jim Hill, Lanier-Mara, Provine, and Wingfield.
Board members, any questions or comments? We've got a question from Dr. Sebat.
Ms. Marshall Thomas, first, let me say thank you for sharing the data on the three-year trend. There's a heck of a story here. If you look back in 27, 2018, we had roughly 300, 350 students that graduated or passed the class dual credit dual enrollment. And last year, that number was over 2,000, so we've increased the number of students passing dual credit dual enrollment by almost six times. And even if you look at 97% of the students who enrolled in it passed. So I just wanted to call those data out as what I see as a strong success in just efforts to get more students engaged in that rigorous curriculum. I did have one question since, once the data came over. I noticed that those gains were across six of our seven schools. I noticed that Forest Hill had a decline from 1819 to 1920, and I wondered if there was any thinking around what might have contributed to that and what efforts may be underway to get the trend going back up again.
For these courses, Dr. Sebat, and thank you very much for highlighting that point. The teachers are district staff, so they're our teachers. So oftentimes, it's difficult to find credentials to teachers to teach the courses. So Forest Hill lost one of their credential teachers last year that taught one of the courses. And so this year, we've been able to add another teacher to pick that back up.
That's great. Thank you again. That's great.
Ms. Marshall. Ms. Marshall. You mentioned credentials. Yeah, what are the required credentials in order to do that? In order to do the teacher classes?
The teachers are required to have a master's degree, at least a master's degree, and 18 graduate hours in the field of study in which they're requesting a credential in.
We can't hear you. Ms. Hilliard, did you have something else to say? We couldn't hear you. You're muted.
I was, I guess I had been muted. Okay. Do I need to ask the question again?
Yes, ma'am. No. Yeah, I got the question.
Okay, so you good?
Yes, ma'am. Did you hear my response?
I did. I did. I heard your response. Yeah. Just trying to see if I meet your requirements.
Yes, ma'am. And you know what? We could use you.
Okay.
Thank you, Ms. Hilliard. Are there any other questions, Board members? If not, then we have item H.
The administration is presenting for information the memorandum of understanding with Hans Community College and Jackson Public School District to offer dual credit career and technical education courses during the 2021 school year. And of course, the purpose is to offer dual credit dual enrollment coursework for the attainment of career and technical post-secondary credits.
Board members, are there any questions or comments? Thank you, Ms. Marshall Thomas.
Thank you.
Board members, now we're moving on to information action items. Ms. Robinson. Ms. Miller. And Mr. Albright.
Yes, we're going to tag team this one. I think.
Who's going first, Ms. Miller?
I'll start. Board members, we are presenting for your information action tonight, a resolution concerning the future of Lake Haiko and the 16th Section of property that sits on. And so we'll start with the presentation. Next slide. Of course, we start all of our presentations with our vision and our mission. This action does support the activities of the district. It provides some revenue for the district, but it also is a unique opportunity for the City of Jackson. Tonight, our presentation will provide Board members and our general public with an update regarding the 16th Section lease of the Lake Haiko property. Important information that we have attained through this process from the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality, and then the next steps in the future use and plans for this property. So Board members, we've, of course, as a school district, we have a number of 16th Section leases, and we have had an over 30-year lease with Entergy. Next slide for me, please. With Entergy that actually ends on October 31st of 2020. Entergy has been in that site for over 30 years, and they've been actually using that site as a cooling pond. It's adjacent to, of course, the power plant, and so over those past 30 years, Entergy has held several permits with MDEQ that have allowed it to continue to be used as a cooling pond. The water has actually flowed out and then flowed right back into the plant. The permit for this property is unique for a cooling pond, and is unique, has been given to Entergy for several reasons. They've had 24/7 maintenance engineers on site that have been able to maintain the levels of the cooling pond and also to meet those very stringent requirements of MDEQ. However, at the end of this lease, the district has some considerations that have to be done, but in an effort to make sure that we are fully utilizing the 16th Section property at the end of the lease, we have some requirements, and MDEQ has some requirements that the property must be returned to its usable condition. This is a huge opportunity for Jackson, and having grown up in that area most of my life in Jackson, this is a great opportunity for the City of Jackson to utilize this property. Next slide. We have, the district has worked with officials from the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality along with Entergy officials. And so just some background information on Lake Haiko. It has been considered by MDEQ as the highest-risk dam in the state of Mississippi, and this is primarily due to its proximity to housing and other areas of the city that in the event of some type of failure, that it would affect potentially 4,000 to 4,000, 5,000 structures or in our families. So that's one of the reasons that there is this designation by MDEQ. One of the other reasons is that there is no spillway. If you're familiar with the reservoir, which I think is the second-highest risk dam in the state, there is no reservoir that regulates the flow of water in and out of that particular body of water. There is actually a pipeline that extends from Pearl River to manage that property and manage that water levels. MDEQ has in the process of an Entergy decommissioning, are beginning to decommission this property over the last probably 12 years. They've done some initial testing of the fish and the aquatic life there, and there are some concerns about the level of pollutants and pesticides there. So one of the opportunities that we have in order to make sure that we are maximizing this use for the property and putting it in the best possible position for the district and the city to utilize this is to require Entergy to do the proper cleanup and remediation of the property in compliance with MDEQ requirements for the permits. We have done some initial review of some of the costs that we anticipate for maintenance if the district were to take it over, and that maintenance somewhere in the range of $400,000 to $1,000,000 annually. Again, Entergy had 24/7 maintenance and monitoring of that facility. They had engineers on duty that could manage that facility, and so the district will be looking at that type of cost annually in addition to the loss of about, most recently, $328,000 of revenue that the district is no longer going to receive from this 16th Section lease at this point. Next slide. So as I mentioned, this is a very unique opportunity for the City of Jackson and also for the district. Again, growing up in that area, folks have really wanted to do some really positive things about the neighborhood and positive things for that environment, and we're excited about this opportunity. But before we do anything, the lake has to be drained and the dam has to be breached in order that the property be remediated according to MDEQ standards. That means the testing of the aquatic life must happen. The dam must be breached. We have to make sure that the sludge, that I've learned more about than I think I ever in life wanted to know about, the sludge has to be remediated, tested, make sure that if there's any contaminants that be taken away from or disposed of properly, if there's additional dirt or work that has to be done, this is the stage that we need to do this. And right now, quite honestly, Entergy has been a very good partner with us and a very good partner for the district and the city in making sure that they are prepared and poised to do whatever is necessary to make sure that the property is in good shape for the district to take it over and look at the future uses. Next slide. So while we do that process, and it is a process that we think could take somewhere upwards around a year to a little bit more than a year, the district has committed, along with city officials, county officials, and other government officials, to establish an advisory committee. We had a town hall meeting last Friday, and it was very well-attended. I was actually really excited about the attendance and the participants that we had that were from all over the city that were interested in working with us to establish an advisory committee that would look at different ways and the possibilities for the future use. Throughout this advisory committee, they would also identify the next steps, make sure that we are engaging all the community members and those stakeholders in that area to discuss what type of options we could have. We're also working very closely with state and local government as well as our national officials to help us to see what other entities can do to support our planning and then develop a strategic plan and a clear plan for the use of Lake Haiko and that property. As you're aware, the park is adjacent to that, and so there've been just a number of exciting ideas about what that property could be used for. We've heard a water park. We've heard residential. We've heard a solar farm, and so there are a lot of opportunities out there, and I think the community is poised and excited about the ability to, what we could make this property actually be not only for the district, but for the City of Jackson. Next slide. So at this point, Board members, we'll pause, and Mr. Albright and I are here as well to engage in any questions or comments you have, and then we can proceed with the actual resolution that's being presented to you tonight for adoption.
Board members, before we take any questions or comments that you might have, just want to add a couple of additional thoughts here. One is just to underscore that, you know, we have appreciated the long-term lease in Entergy. We really have. It's been an awesome business relationship for us, obviously considerable revenue for the district, and we'll miss the revenue from this lease, but want to be absolutely clear that we've appreciated the partnership and the business relationship with, well, so the business relationship, but also the partnership with Entergy and the way in which they've engaged with us to help us to understand the complexities of this deal and the complexities of the permitting and all of that, and of course, our partnership with the Secretary of State's Office and the Department of Environmental Quality. Name that because, you know, what we're proposing to you this evening, Board members, and as we think about kind of, you know, the weight of all of this is, you know, as we think about the future, we know that there's quite a bit of history, and I would bet lots of kind of emotion attached to this property and the lake in particular. But as we think about the potential use for the lake in various, as Ms. Miller has already named, the various ideas and kind of high-level proposals that we've heard, and I'm sure many more that are out there, what we've come to understand over the last several months is in order to get there, there's some readying work that has to happen, and that requires that as they close out their lease with us and the permit that they hold with the Department of Environmental Quality, that we have Entergy to take some actions to ready the property such that we could then use it for whatever comes next in our planning process. This is not our, I've said this before, and I'll say it again, this is not our core business. This is not our core business as a district, and we don't claim to be experts in development and the many possibilities that exist for how we might use this property going forward. We do recognize, though, that this is really important property. This is important property, and that many, many, if not all, of the Jackson residents feel that they've got a stake and realize that they've got a stake in this property and want to have voice in it. So we're excited, actually, to engage with others and bring them on in helping us to think about what could be for this property, because it's certainly not something we would want to own or on our own, but that we'd want to engage with others to help us to come to, you know, the smartest, the best next use of the property. But just wanted to really underscore that, you know, we've appreciated the relationship with Entergy. In no way is any of this about Entergy not holding up their end of the bargain as, you know, a part of the, or as a result of the lease that we hold with them and that they hold with us, and in closing out the permits that they have with the Department of Environmental Quality, what we would be asking of Entergy would be to close the property out and close out those legal agreements in ways that would be regulated by the state and the environmental quality. So these are not even things that JPS is dreaming up. These would be the next appropriate steps that Entergy would take in returning the property back and going through those necessary steps in closing out their environmental quality. I believe that's all that I have. I just wanted to underscore those points. Want to see if Mr. Albright has anything more that he wants to add before we open up and take questions and hear from Board members.
Just a couple of points. First off, what Ms. Miller talked about as far as the regulation of the water level, one of the things that makes this dam or this lake such a high risk is the fact that the majority of it is above ground level. Typically, you would take advantage for a recreational lake. You'd take advantage of the topographical contours to fill a lake area, or you would dig it in. This one doesn't do that. And so part of the problem is if the water level is not regulated, if we don't have access to either automatic spillage systems or someone who's out there 24 hours a day, then if the dam breaches, every, essentially, every bit of water that's in that lake leaves it and becomes part of the flow that goes across over 4,000 residences all the way out to I-55. So the risk is certainly financial to us, but the risk is also life, from a life perspective. The other part is that the way the spillway works is that there is an easement from the lake to the Pearl River through a set of easements that Entergy currently to the Pearl River through a set of easements that, that Entergy currently owns. We would have to have a way to assume those or find another means of, of regulating that, that overflow if we intended to keep the lake. So it's all of those things combined, plus the fact that this is a wastewater category permit from MDEQ that I don't even know if they would allow us to, to retain if we want, if we chose to. So from that perspective, the, again, just to reemphasize what Ms. Miller and Dr. Green have said, before we pursue anything, the lake has to be drained, the dam has to be breached. It doesn't have to be completely leveled, but it has to be breached so that it no longer will contain sufficient runoff to cause risk to the surrounding areas.
Board members. Are there any questions?
A couple, Ms. Johnson. One question that I've been asked a number of times throughout this process is, after completing the remediation, what could, is it part of the agreement, or can we make it part of the agreement for Entergy to refill the lake? And so I know that that question has been examined by, by the district. And so if someone could please just share the response that we received to that question.
MDEQ would allow us to put a recreational lake in place, but to do that, we would have to apply for a permit for a recreational, which is, it's basically safe water for swimming, immersion, those kinds of things. So we would have to then meet those criteria. Once it's remediated, I don't know that MDEQ, we would have to have additional conversations with MDEQ to determine whether or not they would allow us to put in a lake of the same size or constructed the same way that this lake has been, meaning with levees as opposed to actually digging it in, in a portion or all of that five hundred-plus acres. But absolutely, we've been told by MDEQ that, that a recreational lake of some description can be put back there.
And so Dr. Sebag, I think, to add a little bit to Mr. Albright's response, what we've been told is, of course, Entergy's lease expires October 31st. So as we appreciate it from, from the attorneys, the requirement is to remediate and to make sure that all of the permitting is complete so that the property is returned back to the, returned to the district. To require them to then make it a recreational facility is a different use than what Entergy actually leased it for. Entergy's lease was for a cooling pond, and for us to ask them to go back and put a different type of structure there would, basically, Entergy would be entering into another lease for a different use that would then, as, as Mr. Albright says, have a different level of MDEQ permits and, and of that nature. So Entergy has not expressed any indication that they, you know, would be willing to go back into another lease with the district, but that does not preclude the district or any other entity from coming in and going through the lease process. And I would imagine, as we go through this advisory committee, that that may be one of the options. But as, as Mr. Albright says, we've talked with MDEQ and also Secretary of State's office. It certainly is poised to be a recreation, recreational body of water. It could be, but it certainly doesn't have to be as large. But there are some different requirements, but, or the, as we appreciate it from our attorneys, our lease does not allow for us to require Entergy to go back with a different use.
So there, there is no legal way to compel Entergy to refill the lake? As I understand it, that, that what the, the, what we have, what the lease allows for is the have it turned back over to the district?
Correct, because the property was, we, you know, it's affectionately known as Lake Haiko, but it, it's a cooling facility. It's a cooling pond. So we've called it Lake Haiko over the years. I don't never, ever know how I got to be that name, but it's actually a cooling pond. So that is what the lease was intended for, and that's how Entergy entered into the lease some thirty-odd years ago.
Right. So from the standpoint of the actual lease, we can compel them to return it to its original condition, the land, which would be just land, and then MDEQ and the requirements around the permit that they hold requires remediation of that land and sludge. So again, to your question, no, we can't compel them legally to, to do anything other than return it to its original state.
Okay, and I think, Mr. Albright, you answered my second question, which is around, how will the district know that the property's been remediated? And it sounds like we will know when MV, when the Mississippi Department of Environmental Quality signals that the work has been completed. Is that correct?
When they, when they allow the permit to be closed, the MDEQ, then we will be assured that the land is safe to occupy.
Okay, thank you.
So, so, Madam Chair. Madam Chair.
Yes, sir.
Let me just put this in the atmosphere. The relationship between JPS and Entergy has gone on for thirty years. The, the lake is over fifty years old. In, in fact, the lake is probably sixty, a few over sixty years old. The lake is actually older than the reservoir. The lake came into existence and operational before the Ross Barnett Reservoir came into existence. So it was a lake there when Entergy decided to be benevolent enough to use it. Yeah, I see it.
Thank you, Mr. Biggs. Board members, any other comments? Any questions? Board members, is there a motion?
Madam, I move that we accept the motion as presented.
Thank you, Dr. Sebag. Is there a second?
Second.
Dr. Sebag has moved, and Dr. Luckett has seconded.
Aye.
Aye. Any nays? The motion is passed. Now we have Dr. Bingham Gibbs.
And this one, we'll have to, I'll have to piggyback with Ms. Miller as well. The Office of Acceptual Education, as well as the Office of Transportation, are presenting for approval to purchase a bus to transport students with disabilities. Currently, we have one bus that is solely assigned to students with disabilities. Due to the increase, or with our pre-case center, we will have three classrooms at Ben Winkle. So due to that, we will need additional routes for students, strictly for students with disabilities. So we are asking for approval to purchase a bus to transport students with disabilities using IDEA exceptional ed funds.
Thank you, Dr. Bingham Gibbs. Board members, are there any questions or comments? Is there a motion?
So moved.
Is there a second?
A second.
Dr. Harrison has moved. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Thank you. Now, board members, we are, we are at the consent agenda items for finance. All of the consent agenda items have been reviewed by the board previously. We've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, board members, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda items?
So moved.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved. Dr. Harrison has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Now we have the consent agenda items general. We've had an opportunity to review this material previously. Are there any questions? If not, is there a motion to approve the consent agenda item general?
I so move. Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Dr. Harrison has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
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 Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. Next, we have the consent agenda items personnel. All of the consent agenda items personnel have been reviewed by the board previously. We've had an opportunity to ask questions of the administration. Are there any further questions? If not, is there a motion?
I so move. For the acceptance.
Second.
Ms. Hilliard has moved. Dr. Luckett has seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, the motion is approved. There is a consideration to hold an executive session. So is there a motion to close the meeting to consider the need to go into executive session?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Dr. Luckett has moved, and I think it was Ms. Hilliard that seconded. All in favor?
Aye.
Aye.
Any nays? There being none, this meeting is closed.